I'd like to call it to order. The November 10th, Monday, Finance Meeting. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia, Mr. Bailey, Mr. Dias.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Ms. Larevy.
Here.
Ms. Pereira.
Maria Cogan.
Here. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Deb, do we have any citizens' input?
We do not.
Committee of the whole, discussion, item 3.01, Finance Policies and Processes. I'm assuming that's Mr. Almeida.
Sure.
You want to go?
Yeah, I mean, I can start.
Superintendent Curley.
So, I had shared with the committee in preparation for this discussion, a packet of information that offered basically all of the policies, the finance policies from our policy handbook, as well as truly an AI-generated overview of each one of those for a quick reference for folks. We've talked a lot in the last year about any potential opportunities, you know, we would take to review all of the policies in the handbook, and I had suggested at times that we take them kind of as groups. And, you know, as we're entering into the budget season, and certainly getting a lot of questions around our spending, I've gotten some questions from time to time, you know, what's the policy on this, what's the policy on that? I thought it would be a good idea to share all of these policies in their entirety, along with the little snippets, so that folks could get an overview of where we are in terms of our, the policies that kind of dictate our operations around finance, and get some feedback. My hope is potentially that we could put a working group together, you know, that is comprised of members of the administration, as well as members of the committee, not necessarily through the, a subcommittee, or even the policy subcommittee, but just a subcommittee of people who have, you know, an interest in taking a look at these policies and making recommendations, potentially to the policy subcommittee for recommendation to the Committee of the Whole. So that's where we are in terms of this, and I would, you know, invite any questions or commentary, because I think that people probably took an opportunity to look at this over the weekend, and then I and Mr. Almeida can answer some questions.
Okay. Mr. Dias.
Right. Just before we begin, and I understand it's important to start the meetings on time, but I do know there's three members missing right now, and if this is a feedback meeting, I know two members are currently on their way, I think they just got caught up. So I think we should just hold off for five minutes, so we can get feedback from the entire committee.
You think that they'll be here within five minutes?
I think so, but I think that would be fair, just give a five minutes, if not, then, so I'd like to make a motion with table for five minutes.
Now, we're recess.
Motion to go at recess.
Five minutes. Let's go. Mr. Agia, we just got the overview on the policy that the superintendent outlined, and before we get into anything related to money, Mr. Almeida was just taking the form, and we called for recess to get you in here. Mr. Almeida.
As the superintendent stated, we provided the finance policies as they, as we have them.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Kevin, could you maybe eat the microphone? I'm not able to discern. Or is there another monitor? No?
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay. The superintendent stated that we provided the finance policies as they stand currently, so at this point, we're just going to open up for questions.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dias.
Thank you, and I was able to go through the backup, and I'm happy we have this opportunity to give feedback to your team and to the administration. So I'm going to first start with the financial batches. Just as myself as one member, we get multiple copies of the same batch per day, and if you click on like an older batch, it sends you a link to a new batch, and it gets a little bit confusing which one is which. And if I think we could also label the batches a little bit better, I think that would go a long way as well, especially when we have questions on the batches, we know which one we could pinpoint to attach the questions to.
And what, in what particular, what kind of information are you looking for, or what change?
So, for example, the, when you send, when the batches get sent over, they have like, like a different, different names to them, maybe just saying, this is more clear and concise name, I could think of something better offline to give you, but.
Okay.
Again, not really big issues, but I think just little things that would be helpful, and I think the questions need to be answered sometimes more in a timely fashion, so therefore I can sign them in a more timely fashion as well. That's what I have on the batches. Start with the, go forward with the late fees. Do we have an update on what we're going to do to crack down on late fees?
Get closer.
Get closer to the mic.
Pull it up closer, it's hard to hear down here.
Can you all hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. So in terms of late fees, what are we doing to crack down on the late fees? Just for example, I, the batch I received yesterday, going through it, one of the facilities batches was already received, was already late, and I just received it yesterday, and it's already late, and it said that we would get like some sort of like minor monetary fine if we're past 30 days, which it already is. So I don't know if, again, that has to be a conversation we need to have with the city, but what can we do to crack down on the late fees?
So, I mean, I can't answer as to why we're, why you or I or anyone else would see a batch where something was already late. I do, my understanding, however, is that the only late fees we have really ever assessed is through utilities, and we did have one that had recently been assessed and then forgiven this past spring into the summer that was outside of utilities. But I know that a lot of these say, you know, within 60 days, within 90 days, some I think have been a little bit shorter, 30 days, we've been able to get extensions on those. But to my knowledge, we have not been assessed late fees. That doesn't mean, out of respect for these companies, we shouldn't look to pay them in a timely fashion and within the timeframe that's been agreed upon, but I don't believe late fees have been assessed for any of those.
Okay, and I'll send you the individual one that I'm talking about, sending a question tonight or tomorrow, but in terms of the utilities, what are we, I know that was a topic of discussion earlier, in earlier meetings, what are we doing to, like, I know, I know you said, I believe you said you would all look into it and see what like some of the root causes are, and I'm not sure if it's something to do with procurement on the city's side, or if it's something that is on our side that we could do better.
Now, there's things that happen with the utility companies. Just, just today, I've, I've pretty much taken on the utilities myself, and I've been dealing with the utility companies to ensure that we're paying things timely. And so, you know, we, we were able to extend the timeframe on the utility bills from their general 30 days to now 55 days for National Grid and 45 days for Liberty Utilities. We were trying to get the same window for Liberty Utilities, and they would not, they would not honor it. In addition to that, we've had a lot of issues with National Grid in regards to how they post payments, to the point where we are, we are issuing individual checks to National Grid to apply to accounts correctly, where before we were just issuing one check for a series of bills. And, you know, there's always issues, there are issues over and over and over again. And once, I've, just in the last two weeks, I've submitted three different emails for corrections that are needed on their end, on the way they're applying things. The fortunate part about it is they've put a hold on any late fee for us until January 1st, and they're going to, they're going to back, give us back, they're going to credit us back the late fees that were charged for this past year.
Well, that's good, and thank you for disclosing that. Is this something we're working on with legal counsel in any way, if they're, you know, not honoring contracts, or they're not following fiscal?
We, I, we're on top of it. We are very on top of it right now, and, you know, we're, we're continuing to work with National Grid to ensure that these things are getting done on time.
What's the process of when a expenditure or a bill gets transferred from the, from the school department after we sign off to the city? What's the process after that?
So, so the warrants, the city, city will print the warrants on Monday. So as of, as of Friday, typically Friday morning, if we've submitted anything, anything through Friday morning typically, sometimes later in the day Friday, it'll get on the warrant for Monday, and then the city will fund the warrant that week. And typically, the checks are usually issued on the city end by the Friday of that following, of that week.
Would you know, like specifically, does it have to be signed off by like, say, their auditor or their treasurer, the CFO?
Typically, typically the auditor signs off on the, on the warrant, and the mayor signs off on the warrant.
Okay. A few last questions, in terms of the processes for, because I just recently saw this in the financial batches, for the cyber incident, who, who's responsible in our indirects for, for paying that?
I'm sorry?
For, for example, for legal, like I saw some, recently some legal bills come through the, through the batches, who's responsible, is it in our indirect cost agreement for paying the?
We, we pay the legal fees on, for our side.
Okay. Um, for, I don't know, this is more of a general question, but I think it goes into the policies and processes. Are we cracking down on what we're using Michael Joyce's law firm for? Because I think there needs to be some policies in place in terms of having either some sort of contract with Michael Joyce's law firm. For example, I just saw, I believe, a thousand dollar bill from Michael Joyce for handling one public records request, and it's my understanding that Mr. Joyce was, should be, or at least he should be, only for instances that involve his expertise. I think, my opinion, is that public records requests should be handled by the city's corporation council and not going to the big law firms, in my opinion. I think that's something we need to crack down on. Last two questions is, and I saw this in the Collins report, is the financial reporting is, said something, finding about financial reporting not being available for facilities? Do you know what that's about?
Yes, so typically, we don't, we don't provide the reports, but we are going to provide them moving forward.
And in terms of procurement on the facility's side, they don't, who would, it would just be your office, actually, who handles the procurement in the district?
So the procurement typically will come from the department head, and so the department head is tasked, if, if and when needed, to get free quotes, you know, for any purchase, and that information is submitted to our department, handled through typically our procurement specialists, who will review all the documentation, send back any information if more information is needed, and then once all the information is fulfilled and we have that, we'll move it forward.
Okay. I do know that, that report also made some references in regards to the procurement policies, and if there, and made a recommendation that we should review our procurement policies in terms of that, have we been running into issues in terms of procurement?
We've been very on top of it this year, I will, I will say that.
Okay. I yield for now, thank you.
Mr. Agia.
Thank you. One of the, the questions through the entire package, on the bottom of all these policies, it says something like a note, and it says something like a check on it from towns or cities. It almost looks like as if we are taking what MASC submits to us, but not adjusting it for city, for the city. Did you notice that on the?
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I think we probably wouldn't need that, in my mind, if we, when we're adopting the policy, we say, we've tweaked it to match what city needs. What I, I've complained about this for a while, about the way we did policies. So my recollection in the past was we would get 100 different pages from MASC with stuff like that on the bottom. We would go to the policy subcommittee and say, here's the list of all these policies, motion to approve or not. And that's not a good, that's not good practice, I don't think anybody thinks it is, but this was just telling, because it basically proved to me what I was trying to say, is that we have to have each policy looked at and voted on for the merits of what it is to fall river. MASC doesn't run our policies. We can do the generic thing, which I'm not in favor of, is just say, oh, MASC said these are the policies, so therefore, that's what we do. We've done that over the past 10 years, probably, eight years. We had some tremendous policies here, related to fiscal accountability, fiscal controls, and the, and the like. We got rid of those, and I, for the life of me, can't figure out where the heck they went. I think what happened is, at one point, before I got back on this committee, is we took all of the policies and said, this is the MASC's recommendation, so these are all our new policies. Not that we threw out the others, but I think we threw out the others. So however, you can look back into that, it's more of a Mr. Almeida thing, where, with the finance pieces.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just repeat a little bit of what I said before you arrived, and we recessed, but, you know, the intent here was to pull these policies together, you know, obviously just pulled them right from our policy manual. I actually, I said, used AI to give a little overview, in case people didn't want to read through like every single mass general law, so people could get an overview of what each policy spoke to, to kind of get a flavor for what we do have as policies, with an eye on revisiting all of them kind of as a group, and inviting folks from the committee to get together as a working group, members of the administration, folks from the school committee, to just start going through all of the policies. I agree that there are, as, as you read through them and it comes up, I mean, some of it's kind of this help language that's built in there, like by MASC, like, don't forget to check your charter. We published it with, where it still says that, note, check your charter, kind of thing. So I do think all of them need to be revisited and then brought through policy subcommittee, and brought to the committee as a whole. Some of it might just be around a little bit of cleanup, others, I think as people read through them, might speak to, for some folks, the need for complete revision, or an additional policy, or something like that. But that was the invitation at the start of the meeting, and something that I hope we can, you know, start doing in the next month or two.
Thank you. So we, if you go back to the minutes of the last finance, or one of them, maybe a year ago, the, most of these things were brought up that time, and some of the comments have been the same, like, we need to do it. So that will just lead us to, why didn't we get something done with some of these policies? Including, some may be able to be combined, some might be able to, they're redundant, some might be things that are not accurate. As we change, one of which, I was looking at the quarterly budget transfer authority, we made motions that changed this policy, and I don't see it on here, other than, it does say, Chief Financial Officer Quarterly Report, but we've made a change to call it anticipated, which is a big, big change, so that when the transfer authority is quarterly anticipated, we should have a lot more transfers early on and not wait till the end. I am a proponent of making sure the school committee has as much authority as they can related to the budget, so that's just one of the policies, which was DBJ, that I think we should look at sooner than later. The other one is DBG, Budget Adoption Procedures, which I think is pertinent to this discussion tonight. In it, it says, all revenue sources are subject to adoption by the school committee under the cost center line item authority. I think we need to get a clear answer to, what does, what does everyone believe that that is? Because I certainly know that my belief is not what is actually happening. So we need clarity on what does DBJ, DBG mean, related to cost centers? I'm of the belief that cost center also means line items within the cost center, so that when we do vote on the bottom line of the cost center, we're actually seeing the line items that add up to that end number. I don't believe that that's happening throughout the, the district, including budgets, Title I, Title II, all those things. I don't see that we're, we're getting a chance to actually vote on those line items. So I think that one needs to be certainly looked at. An example of, of that would be, last meeting, Mr. Farias came up and explained to us that we had $2 million in additional Title I funds. That Title I number came in several months after we already approved the actual budget. So that, there implies to me that when we were told, when we did the budget, let's say, June, middle of June, all those line items didn't necessarily add up, because we since received $2 million in additional Title I funds, and that never came before the committee to vote on those line items, where that $2 million was. Mr. Almeida indicated that was used to pay raises, but we, as a school committee, should have had a say on what all of that, those line items would be within the cost center. So that's sort of my two cents on that. The procurement is still, I, I still wonder what's been going on with procurement in the city. I've heard too many times that things were held up in City Hall without any backup or any information coming from the school administration as to that being the case. So we still are looking for an answer on that. But in a general question to Mr. Almeida or superintendent, why does it take so long to pay the bills in the school department? Why?
You want to?
My question is, why does it take so long to pay bills in the school department? I'll give you an example. If you talk to anyone in contracting, for instance, and it's something, it might be a city issue as well, if a job was going to cost me, as a contractor, $50,000 to pay prevailing wage and the like, I want to do that job, I have to tack on 35% to that cost, because I'm going to have to wait six or eight months to get my money. So if I know I'm going to have to take $50,000 out of my account to put in to pay prevailing wages for jobs, and I'm going to wait six months, I have to recoup that money at some point, so we end up paying, whether it's not a quote-unquote late fee, we have to create a, takes a long time to pay fee. And I, I just, I can't figure that out. I'm open to any, any thoughts, any ideas, but.
In that, in that situation, it depends on the timing of when we're notified that that's going to happen. Depending on the dollar amount, if it's over $25,000, we have to bring it to you to approve. Once we get that approval, we try to push it through as quickly as we can to get a purchase order generated, so the contractor has a purchase order. And as soon as we get a bill, we process it, that's typically the process. What we can't control is the time, the time from when a bill is, when a bill actually happens, or the service happens, and we get, we get an invoice. So it all depends on when it's coming from the department to us to process. But when bills arrive in, in my department, they typically take a week to a week and a half to be processed. Once they're processed, they're put on a batch for that week, the batch goes out for, for approval, I sign, the superintendent signs, four members of, I'm sorry, two members of the school committee signs. Once the batch is signed on our end, the batch is then turned over to the city. Once it goes to the city, depending on when during the week it goes to the city, it'll go on the warrant for Monday, check will be issued on the Friday. So it all depends on the timing of when that invoice comes in.
Yeah, I mean, everything you explained sounds like a, you know, 30, 45 day, like a normal, you know, thing, but I've heard that explanation multiple times. The reality is, it's still not happening for some reason, and I'm not saying it's necessarily on your end, but I think at, when we have things that are taking way too long, if we don't address them, they're just going to keep happening. So I'd encourage you and the superintendent to get together to figure out, how does this happen? As you were talking, one of the things that makes me question some of it is, do we allow people to incur all kinds of bills before we assign a contract?
No.
Are we supposed to do that?
Are we supposed to, supposed to do what?
So, under the case where you just mentioned, that a person's doing the job, and then we have to, if it's over 25,000, we've got to get a, an approval from the school committee, do the people start the job before the school committee actually signs? Because I, I, I conceive that being, if I'm working on a job, and it's taken me 60 days to get the work done, and then we don't get it until 60 days later, now the person's already out 60 days, like the process is 60 days or 30 days, or, I, I don't know that anybody should be doing any work for any amount of money, without knowing that all the sign-offs are on to get paid.
I agree.
Do you think that that is happening?
I can tell you it's happened in the past, yes.
It has? Has it been corrected?
We continue to improve, yes.
Got it. You, you know what, my stance would be on that.
I understand, yep.
The, the last one was about the, the cost centers, what I mentioned, so I think just heading into planning for next year, I do think that we do have to, when, especially when the new committee comes forth, to know, what does that mean for cost centers? We sit in front of MASC, who comes down to give us training, and they actually try to get the school committees, even though they're supposed to represent the school committees, and I'm saying this in a public meeting, no one feel well, they can watch it. They come down and recommend that school committees provide little oversight to the superintendent and the administration. That's what our union, or our bargaining consultant, whatever you want to call them, comes down and advocates. So they say, oh, no, no, you can't do that, you can't do this, and we say, well, we can, as a school committee, we can set up as many parameters as we want at budget time to pass the budget. They say, oh, no, no, we recommend this, because you shouldn't be involved in this, you shouldn't be involved in that. So I'm just laying it out there, it doesn't need an answer, I just know that for me, I'd rather have more approval and more authority on the budget as a member of the school committee than less. So we've been lately going to less and less, less transparency, less documentation. I'm of the belief that we need to do more. We'll see what the new committee says when they come in, because they're going to be the ones to actually pass the budget, but I'm speaking for myself, I think we need more rather than less. One of the last things was, Mr. Dias mentioned, public records requests, and I do think that's an issue we've asked for at least six months of asking the question. Michael Joyce's company, still, two years later, after being notified, still does not have a contract. We have no set control over how much they're making. We pay that firm over $200,000 a year. We still have no contract with them. I've asked the question, do we actually have them do everything, or do we do specialty cases, like Mr. Dias said? And then we get, well, they're the person that does the freedom of information requests. Well, in my mind, if you're paying an attorney, a specialized attorney, to deal with pupil personnel issues, you might have to pay a good dollar for you to get the quality that you need to. If that same person is paying, we're paying the same amount for public relations, public records requests, something's drastically wrong with this picture. And I've personally sent emails that said the following. Michael Joyce bills us, every sign there's an email, we get one quarter of an hour at $250 an hour for every email he sends. I defy anybody to tell me that that makes any sense whatsoever. That's $60 to send one email on a case with no controls and no contract. We definitely have a problem there. So I would encourage the superintendent to look into changing it. When we, are we going to go into the second, you didn't go to the second one about the timeline, right? That's after? Good, I yield, thank you.
Ms. Larevy? Yeah, hi, thank you. So, yeah, so my question's on DBD, and maybe just a recommendation about DBD. As we all know, we have three newly elected school committee members coming in. What I'd like to see is some, some training, understand the budget, know the budget, how to read the budget, before the actual budget time comes. It's something that never really was offered to me and a couple of my colleagues. We had to go out and, and ask. We had to go out and ask for the assistance. What I'd like to see is an official, you know, it says right here in the, in the sentence, advanced planning. I think this should also be part of the advanced planning, is getting these newly elected officials ready for the '26, '27 budget process. I yield.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you. I just want to very quickly piggyback on my colleague's comments. I, for one, as well, support amending our policies for full transparency and just two ideas to do so. One, I believe the threshold should be lowered. I believe it was raised to, I believe, don't correct me if I'm wrong, 35,000 for a, 25,000 for a contract to come before the school committee. What was it prior to that, to it being raised?
10.
I think we should go back down to 10. And I also believe we should go back to what signatures with the pen. And I really, my, my personal opinion is I don't think you'll run into the issues I think you're expecting you will run into, my opinion. But I think there can be ways that we could work it out so you don't run into the issues. That's my opinion. One last, oh, on the MASC, I also believe, and I've been very adamant about this, that they do not support the interests of the school committee, and I think we should leave the MASC at some point. One last question I wanted to follow up on. So could you just remind me again how the indirect cost works in terms of legal fees? I thought it was a certain amount the city pays or if it's under a certain amount?
So it's up to, it's up to $40,000 of work for the attorney and anything over we pay for. And then anytime they consult with outside, outside legal, we pay for that.
Okay. Last question, in terms of, I, in terms of financial policies, if there is an independent investigation that's ordered and we start getting the bills in, shouldn't that come from a vote of the school committee if it involves parties within our purview?
You tell me, I...
Should, I, I think that's the prudent thing. So I just saw certain batches come in and I guess there's some, some sort of investigation that I, my opinion should have came before the school committee for a vote. I think the school committee was bypassed by the city, by Corporation Council, and that's just not okay. And that's something that should be included within the policy.
Is that budget?
I don't think that's budget, Mr. Dias.
Finance, finance policies and processes, there's nothing about budget in here. However, I think that in terms of financial standpoint, if it's something within the purview of the school committee, the school committee should be ordering the use of those funds. That's my financial standpoint. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Agia?
Just on that question, so the, the policy of that 20,000, is that per case or is that per year?
Per year.
Per year.
Per year. So the first $20,000 of services they'll give us free and then we have to pay otherwise. The question that Mr. Dias asked, so I don't, I didn't see that batch, but how much is budgeted for outside legal? If you don't know, if you could get it to us, so...
I will get it.
It has to be a budgeted line item for outside legal. So technically speaking, if that, if that was within, let's say the budget's 50,000 and we had 50,000 in there, I would say, okay. My gut tells me that we don't have that much money in a specific line item for outside legal, but if we make the expense, we just got to transfer it somehow without the authority of the school committee. That's, I think, where Mr. Dias is going with it, is that we have to look at, you know, how many of those things can we do? So if the superintendent is authorizing outside investigations, which as one member, I'm totally fine with, once it gets to the point of it's going to go over whatever the amount of money is, just come back to us and say, we need to replenish that account. That, to me, is good checks and balances on, it's not an issue of whether she has the right to do it. I do think that it's something that, you know, we ultimately have to look at. When I look at policy as well, we have a budget and we, I think somebody else just mentioned it, that we have three new committee members coming on board. And I think that out of respect to those individuals, we have to be careful with what we, what we vote on over the next two months or six weeks so that we're not binding them to decisions that we made for the next year, two years, three years, or whatever. For instance, if we have contracts that are up, I don't believe anybody should be getting any increases until the next committee comes in so that they have a chance to weigh in on what they feel along with the new committee feels. Not just try to put a whole bunch of salaries and requests on now when we know there's three new members coming in and they might have different opinions than what the current people have. So my vote would be for no additional contracts up until January when we get the new committee sworn in. With that, I yield.
Okay. 3.2, budget priorities. That's our next discussion item. Superintendent?
Yes, so I provided, I provided the committee with just, you know, a reminder, some background information around the timeline that's been used in the past, what our budget calendar looked like, our last year's priorities, and then also a, you know, what the data looked like coming out of a community survey that we did last year with staff and members of the community, you know, sending things home to parents. And then also offered a survey draft because I'd like some feedback in terms of kind of the budget process overall and then specifically talk about some ideas to get some stakeholder feedback, you know, potentially, you know, maybe using a survey, but then some other means. Because I, you know, I've said to a couple of people on the committee, and certainly people on my team know this, I do think that year after year, we use the surveys, we get the same kind of information over and over from folks, whether it was through the SOA prioritization or then just local budget prioritization outside of the SOA surveys and just looking for maybe a different way to get some feedback from people. And then also, I know that since, you know, at least since I've been working in central office, we've seen budget priorities that really look the same from year to year and we have, we end up, you know, setting the same kinds of priorities around instruction and support for students and professional development and hiring and recruitment and things like that. And I know that during the process last year, we got some feedback about different kinds of priorities, maybe kind of philosophical priorities around things like, you know, we're going to prioritize, you know, maintaining level service or we're going to prioritize, you know, sound fiscal management, whatever it is. And so I just want to get some feedback from people before we enter into this process in terms of any ideas that people have to improve it.
Mr. Corey?
So Madam Superintendent, as far as the stakeholder feedback is, who are you looking for? I mean, are we looking for like school teachers as well as administrators, as well as people who maybe run some programs? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
As far as stakeholders are concerned?
Yes. And so we generally do get feedback from folks who work in our schools and then we send one home to families. That's generally, you know, principals get a version of the same survey that goes out to families, that goes out to other staff members.
So you're looking for a cross-section of, you know, comments coming from outside the realm of the ad building and to try to figure out, you know, where the priorities may lie? Is that what you're thinking of?
And also just some thinking around, you know, maybe a different lens when we, when we think about what we're prioritizing. Again, just different themes that lie outside of asking people, do you prioritize, you know, before and after-school care or do you want us to prioritize school safety? I, I mean, I think generally speaking, we do the kinds of surveys that say, pick your top four out of this list, is there anything else you'd like to recommend? And then we look for themes, but the truth is, year after year, the themes are the same. And maybe that's okay and maybe that makes sense because we have to keep, you know, moving forward with the kind of work that we're doing or not. Maybe, maybe people in the community would say, no, I think you have to change your focus, it really needs to be this other thing that doesn't quite make our list every year.
Yes. Thank you, I yield.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you, Superintendent. In terms of, we did a survey last year, correct, for the last budget? And what was the response like to that? I don't know if...
You mean the number of people who responded? It's generally, it's generally fairly low, I would say, maybe, you know, I honestly can't remember, but I feel like generally speaking, if we can get 10% of people to participate, that's a good thing. But I don't remember offhand. It might actually say in the backup that I gave you, we had, we heard from 599 families, I was going to say 700, but we heard from about 600 families and 213 staff members.
Okay, I guess, I figured it would be low. So my feedback would be, I don't believe we utilize all our technological resources. I think we should partner up with either news organizations or different partners to spread the message. Just for an example, I thought a good survey that went out by the city was, I believe it was the CDA director, he, I remember he was for years pushing the survey and he used different platforms and I could have sworn that got a good response. So I think that's one way we can start. Second way is, for example, I think we can do a better job at advertising to public hearing. Last year, there was absolutely no one there and not many individuals knew this was even going to take place. So again, using media, social media to advertise that as well, or even if we have to send something home to the, to the parents, like to the kids, put something to give to their parents, I think would be one good way to increase. I guess the only thing I'll say for actual budget priorities, I think it's just important that the administration just take a review of all the programs that we have, see which ones are effective, see which ones aren't effective, and go from there on which ones to fund. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Mr. Agia?
So the question I have for Superintendent is, in the current budget cycle, which we're going to be going into, are we implementing zero-based budgeting during this cycle?
No. I don't, I cannot promise a zero-based budgeting at this point.
Okay, and is there a reason why?
So for me personally, I think that what we've called zero-based budgeting in the district in the past isn't quite that. And so I guess I would say, like, I'm not saying we won't do it, but right now, we have not, like, put forward the planning that is likely necessary to do that in terms of getting everybody of that mindset to literally build from nothing up in terms of student needs. We ask every single school, you know, we sit with every single school leader and every departmental leader and we review their populations, we review the need, we review what the staffing and resources looks like in those buildings. We have very good discussions with every single school. Last year, admittedly, most of the, a lot of the discussion at least was around, there wouldn't be more, right? That we would look for people to repurpose the resources in their buildings and make some decisions around, you know, if they really thought they needed one thing, is there something else they would give up? I think that has been the spirit of things in the past, even when it was identified as zero-based budgeting.
Yeah, so I can just give you my way in on that. So for many years now, we've had, we're struggling, we're struggling academically, we're struggling with a lot of different things. We keep doing things the same way, which is what you just described, and I'm agreeing with you that in the past, they said it was zero-based budgeting. We weren't really doing with fidelity, zero-based budgeting. But that doesn't mean we shouldn't. And I think it's time now where we have a lot of resources, we've had a lot of revenue come in, that we need to go to zero-based budgeting, a true zero-based budget. At that point, everyone starts at zero and we're going to determine what's needed in every single department as well as each school, instead of just having it be sort of carried over. I know I said last year, there was winners and losers at the budget and it wasn't taken too kindly, I guess, by some, but at the end of the day, I want to avoid that again. We shouldn't just have to kick it down and say, well, you already had all this, so tell us what's working, what's not, we can tweak around the edges. The time for us and for public schools to keep tweaking around the edges should be over. We now have $15 million more per year for the last six years. We have the money, we just need to do something different. So when it comes time to vote, I'm going to vote for a zero-based budget with fidelity, personally. As the survey goes, I read the draft survey, I think it's a little too long and too cumbersome for, we want to get some feedback, but I feel that, you know, parents, I think, want what's best for their kids. They want their students to have higher academic achievement, they want them to be safe, they don't necessarily know the intricacies of what does special ed law mean, what does special ed funding mean, what does staffing mean? So to try to say, well, what parents maybe didn't say or community members didn't say, well, special education programming needs to be the focus. They might not know that that's really what they would say if we explained it to them. So when I read it, I was sort of saying, what would I personally say? And if I was a parent, I might not say, if I wasn't as intimately involved in all of this, I wouldn't necessarily say some of the things. So I would just caution any surveys to be more concise, to the point, but also that the committee and yourself and your team need to work together to know what is truly needed. So it might not be the popular thing and we just have to make sure that we allow that to be said, that we, at some point, might not just take the, you know, like for instance, you mentioned after-school programs. Everybody wants after-school programs, but we get a hell of a lot more issues than just after-school programs. So I just think if you're going to do a survey, I would try to narrow it so we get something out of it that we could use.
Sure. And I, thank you. So I, I do think that there's something to be said in, you know, for us in terms of our understanding, some of it I do consider to be perception data so that if, if folks said, we really need more of this thing, where internally, we know we've got so much of that, it does signal to us that we have to do a much better job of communicating that to families and, and being much more, you know, transparent, just sharing more information throughout the community. So I think some of what we gain from the questions is that, but, but I don't, I, I agree with you that we can certainly shorten the survey. I gave you a sample of what it could be. And if this, if the spirit of this kind of survey is what folks in general think is going to get us some of the information that we need from families, we can move forward with this. And I would agree that we could do a shortened version of this. I just want to go back to the zero-based budgeting. I, I do want to say that the, I don't, you mentioned that, you know, you would vote for zero-based budgeting with fidelity. I would say that if that is going to be something that is, comes out of this committee as a vote, we would want to know that sooner rather than later because I do think it, it's a lift. It would be a lift for this school community and, and one that we'd want to pay attention to most immediately. But yeah, that's all.
Yeah, my only suggestion on that is the timing is not so great for, we have three new members and we have a current group. What I would recommend that you do, Madam Superintendent, when, I'm sure you're going to meet with all the new folks as well, they're not bound by the open meeting, they can't come up and vote on these things, but I would raise that question with everybody, including us. I gave you my opinion in public meetings.
Sure.
So I think if everybody gives you that impression and it says, oh, this is what we'd like to have, you'll have unofficial vote, I guess, is what I'm saying. If we wait for an official vote, by January, you might be a little late for...
Sure, no, I understand that.
I think that would be a good idea to just to reach out to them and ask them what they think.
Okay.
Thank you, I yield.
Mr. Dias?
Thank you. Just very, very quick follow-up. I was actually going to take a vote, I was actually going to introduce a vote until my colleague just said that, so maybe that's the better course of action. I also support implementing a zero-based budgeting for this cycle. I was, again, like I said, I was going to make the motion, but I think that what my colleague just said was the best way to go. This, and I also agree on the survey as well. I think we'll get a lot more of an impact by having a short survey that can grab more attention from parents than having a long survey where many questions may not even be answered.
Okay.
I yield with that. Thank you.
Any further? Hearing none. Any new business come before the committee? Mr. Dias?
I believe this committee took a vote earlier last year to have... I believe this committee took a vote earlier last year to have quarterly finance meetings where we report out on what we've done to make our finances more efficient. And I think that's, so my question is, one, why haven't we done that since we took a majority vote? And two, just wanted, again, reinforce the idea of how I believe it's important and transparent, just to report out on ways we've made our finances more efficient, not just for the committee, but for the general public as well. Whoever has the answer to that?
I missed the second part. But, so for the first part, I would say that we, I don't, I do remember a discussion about this, and I take your word for it, that there was a vote. I thought there was also a vote to put together a calendar for quarterly meetings for all of the subcommittees, which I did bring to the committee, and the committee didn't move forward with that, the proposed calendar for the fall, which I think had a quarterly finance meeting on it. So we can move forward with, with scheduling those, and, and we will.
I just thought those were two separate issues, but...
I think that they were, but I think that when we brought forth the potential dates for this fall, we did agree, I had suggested at that time that with new committee members coming on in January, it only made sense to bring forth a calendar, you know, through December. And I believe that when that conversation, I don't want to say fell apart, but when we didn't move forward with what was recommended, or suggested, or put together, I think that's where it fell by the wayside. And I'm sorry, but I did miss the second question.
There wasn't a second question. I was just reinforcing my, why I support the updates.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Agia, I'm sorry.
On that note, in light of the fact that we're not going to have the meeting, could we ask the superintendent, Ms. Delmede, to put together any efficiencies that have happened over the last quarter, and just send them to him under separate cover? Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Deb, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Dias?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Adjourned, finance meeting. We'll come back to the regular meeting in four minutes.